Welcome. Thank you all so much for coming. Will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure.
Kellogg.
Here.
She maker.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Polen.
Here.
Hofstadter.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, so I had to like delete out all of the rest of June, so kind of moved us clear down. For the community calendar, a couple of new things. July thirty first is the groundbreaking ceremony for the West Holmes New Elementary School at five o'clock. You can pass this around. Everybody can look at that. Holmes County Fair is coming up, August fifth through tenth. And September twenty first is Art in the Burg, all day. And then the cemetery walk is at two o'clock up at the cemetery on the twenty first. The second part of Art Town Millersburg will be September twenty sixth at seven at the American Hall. October fifth and sixth is the Antique Festival. Boo in the Burg is October twenty sixth at six. And then Trick or Treat All Over Town will be from four to six on October twenty sixth. So those are the upcoming community calendar things. I would like to thank Chief and all of our officers who assisted with the bicentennial parade and fireworks. Thank you so much for that. That was, that was a big deal. It was a hot day. I would like to also personally thank Devon and Brad for coming and being in the parade and being up at the discussion at the courthouse. I really appreciate both of you being there for that. So thank you very much. The Antique Festival Parade is on Sunday, October the sixth, so please plan on being there. We will be in, on the bicentennial float again like we were this time and bring candy to throw. And I talked to Jim from Mill Street Photography. He is going to do pictures on the courthouse steps on Saturday, October fifth of the Antique Festival at four o'clock for all elected officials. So that's the bicentennial things that are coming up. Are there any visitors wish to address council at this time? No? Okay. Can we have a motion to spend the reading of the minutes, please?
Second.
Polen.
Hi.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
She maker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, Khan.
Second.
Khan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
She maker.
Aye.
Polen. And Hofstadter.
Aye.
All right, Bill Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
I didn't understand that.
Are there any?
One more time, Kelly.
Bill Resolution. Are there any questions on the bills? Totalling two hundred fifty-four thousand seventeen dollars and seventy-two cents. Hearing none, do we have a motion to pay?
I'll make the motion to pay the bill.
I'll second.
She maker.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Polen. Vaughn. Hofstadter.
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
Okay, Nate.
All right, the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet this coming Wednesday. We moved it due to the holiday last week. Got another change of zoning district request for the former laundromat property at Fifty No Name Street. Again, they're looking to go R three to Special Use District. And what's proposed is a massage therapy slash fitness wellness studio in that location. AEP did their work on the pole relocation at East Jones Street and Worcester Road. Now we're just waiting on the phone cable companies to show up to move their lines to get that finished up. Pavement Technology Incorporated was in town, did their reclamation work on all the streets. They were gonna do the cemetery, but the days they were here, there was a burial one day, so they weren't in there, of course. And then the next day, there was some tree work happening on property on Fairview, but they were in the back blocking the drive. So they called NASPA, it'd be all right. They're gonna be doing work in Loudville and Worcester. Said we can fit the cemetery in on one of those days if that's all right. I said, no problem. So the budgeted items we've been talking about, nothing new on the loader. We did meet with a, we've got plans out to, I believe, three or four different builders now. So we should be getting quotes back from them pretty soon on our storage building, hoping to keep that rolling. And I have not heard any other updates from clients other than what they had told us previously, that they're weeks behind now. So they've got to push back, so. Got some good news on our sidewalk project for next year. We've got the ARC funding, one hundred and twelve thousand. So with everything else that we'd previously been awarded and our allotment, our appropriation of one twenty-five, we can look at a three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar sidewalk project downtown. Again, I want to start at the west end, work east, simultaneously put in lighting on this, on these blocks from here west. While we've got the sidewalks torn out, there's no better time. And if nothing else, get the conduit in and get them stubbed up for, we can look at doing lights another way if we have to, but should be able to include it.
Any idea how far that will, that amount will take us?
I don't know an exact. I want to say it should, don't hold me to this, but it should get us to the square.
Okay, cool.
I'm hoping. I'm optimistic we should be able to get to the square. That's barring any unforeseen snags like there always is. Just wanted to give you an update on the Hebron Street property. The CIC, from our last meeting till now, has had multiple conversations with the current owners and they did confirm they're willing to transfer to the CIC for no cost. They just want us to cover everything, transfer costs and everything, closing. So Mark Leiner sent us an invoice from the CIC. That's on, that was on the bill resolution that you saw. So they'll have some startup money to be able to handle those things. The commissioners are also chipping in twelve thousand. They're very excited. They're, they're on board. They want to, they acknowledge that this is a great project for them and us, so. It's, I think it's gonna be a good, good project. Hydro flushing is scheduled to begin next week. I wanted to get that out, let everybody know. If you get any discolored water, let it run for a few minutes. It should clear up. If not, give us a call. And then also Blake Judson passed his wastewater two license. He has his license now. So congratulations to him and by the statute or by ordinance, he gets a ten percent raise. Congratulations to Blake. That's, that's not an easy task. Then I do have, would like to discuss personnel in executive session. That's all I had. Oh, I guess I'll piggyback on the Fourth of July. Thanks to the Street Department guys for barricades and cones and all their work as well.
Nate, was there, was there talk about, I can't recall exactly which group. It was a military group that was gonna come and play band.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, Sue Dye had requested Court Street. Yes. So I did talk to her. She had looked at the amphitheater. She would prefer it to be at the courthouse. She was pretty adamant about keeping it there.
That was the Air Force Band, right?
The Air Force.
Air Force Band.
And one of the things they talked about was the band members come and they go into the courthouse or the, maybe the commissioner's office and change. Like they have a change of, they have like a uniform that they wear so that while they perform. There's really not a facility at airport that would accommodate that, so I can understand that.
Speaking of the amphitheater, though, have there been requests to perform down there this year?
Yeah, we've got, we've got events scheduled.
Okay.
There's a Home Center for the Arts is doing a class there. It's a multi-week. They're holding a session. I can't think off the top of my head what it is, but there, that's on the schedule. There's, there's one or two others. I would say close to half a dozen things have been set up to be there. If you remember last year, I looked for them to be reaching out anytime here. We had a food truck vendor reach out about holding like a food truck rally down there. I think that'd be a cool, something to do.
I think Berlin does it like once a week. They have that place. They have food truck vendors.
Yeah. It'd be nice if they could incorporate some kind of show or performance at the amphitheater and then have the food trucks there. It'd be well attended.
And I think at the last meeting, we had tabled Sue's request for closing Court Street. So do we need a motion to?
We would.
I would make a motion to approve the closure of Court Street.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Polen.
Hi.
Kellogg.
Yes.
She maker.
Aye.
Vaughn. Khan.
Aye.
Thank you for the reminder.
You're welcome.
Okay, Chief.
Nate, surprisingly, I posted for position. Chris Jones, he was my new patrol officer, turned in his letter of resignation. His last day was actually July seventh. Guess I'm not sure the formalities if you guys have to accept or not. He's already gone. But I'm pretty sure he's not coming back, so I wish him luck. He's a good officer. He's young. He moved into something that's more in line with what he does in the Army. He's getting opportunity to be a SWAT medic and won't be in a patrol unit. So best of luck to him. And with that, you know, I posted for, for replacement of him, but we also have budgeted for an additional person. So while I'm looking for one, I'd like to get council permission to go ahead and, if we get the applications and have the opportunity to go ahead and hire that plus one. That's something we've kind of budgeted for at least the last couple of years. Talked to Bobby about it and we definitely have the money there, so. That's something I'd like to get permission from you guys to do if we get any, get any worthy applicants.
Do we send anybody Cleveland, to Cleveland today for the memorial service?
No.
We should.
Should, but I get somebody right now. I have a downed officer and I have an officer on vacation for a month, so our staff needs to be in right now.
Well, I just wanted to say that I get the dockets and impressed with the traffic tickets. The last three weeks have been over sixty of all, everything. Screeching tires, wheeling tires, muffler, speed, so thank you.
The outreach at Walmart was very nice. You guys gave away pens and all kinds of stuff and it was really, it was really neat.
The Power Show, I don't remember what the date was, the end of June, out at the fairgrounds, we did a touch truck out there. And then Jeff and I believe Dan was down at Walmart for the outreach for the day. And I have another touch truck scheduled. First, one of the first two weekends in August, it's before the fair, so the third, that's gonna be a gateway fellowship. They do a preschool, or preschool, but before school function, Larry puts it on and they have requested us for touch trucks. So we'll be up there from ten, ten to two, I believe is what the time is for that also.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, Chief. Bobby.
Okay, so first things, first things for acknowledging the June financials. It says on here to accept the twenty twenty-four budget, but what I really meant was twenty twenty-five. So if everything looks good there, just need a motion to accept the budget.
I'll second.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
She maker.
Aye.
Polen.
Hi.
Khan.
Aye.
Okay, I'll be heading, this is just an FYI, I'm heading to an income tax conference the day after tomorrow. It's a three-day conference and I'm planning to get really smart there, so just wanted to let you guys know that. And lastly, as far as my things, we, we've talked about this briefly, but next year, we, we have a full audit. It's gonna need to be done. And there's different methodologies of finding your, your auditor. And this, the Auditor of State contacted us and said that we have the opportunity to extend, extend the contract that we have with the, with the company that's done our last several audits. So we kind of have that relationship with them. They know us, we know them. Things have gone really well with those audits. So what that does is if we accept that, if you allow me to accept that contract extension, we don't have to start that bidding out process with the Auditor of State to find us a new firm to do our, to do our audit. So I thought it sounded good. I actually contacted a really smart former fiscal officer to ask what she, what she thought. And she said absolutely. She thinks it's a great idea and that I should ask you guys if it's okay to go ahead and extend that contract.
You need a motion for that?
I do, yes.
I'll make a motion to extend that contract.
I'll second.
Ooh, that was a tie. We'll go with Khan. Hofstadter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
She maker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
And Polen.
Aye.
That's it for me. Okay, thank you. Bob?
The first thing is the Akron Children's Hospital Memorial. I understand you have, have a copy in your packet. I asked, both Kelly and I talked to Michael Wallendorf from Akron Children's. And I asked him, because it's not necessarily that obvious, the reason for the memory and understanding. So I'm gonna quote him, and this is what he said. That the purpose is to verify that the mission of Akron Children's Hospital is the same in Millersburg as it is in Akron. And to notify the residents of Millersburg that Akron Children's Hospital is committed to serve the residents of Millersburg the same way they serve the residents of Akron. So, and this just formalizes their commitment. You know, we don't really have any obligations under the agreement except to allow them to provide services, which why wouldn't you make? So that's the reason. And so you need to authorize the mayor to sign that memory and understanding.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So has this been going on for a while? I mean, have we been?
I'm not sure when they opened the office. We were just contacted in the last month or so.
Okay. And the office is, is it up at the professional building or?
Yeah.
And is it, so has it just happened?
No, they've been here a couple of years.
One to two, probably, one to two years. I, this is the first time I was hearing about it when they called me.
I don't think we've ever been contacted about this kind of thing before.
Right, no. And that's why I'm asking, what's, what's the purpose of this?
Yeah, what is?
Is it just largely ceremonial?
I think it is. I think it's to let people know that they have the service here and they're accepting new patients. And it's for low-income folks that don't necessarily have Medicaid even, so they just want to put it out there.
Yeah, they should know.
So I didn't know if you wanted something, want to make a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Polen. She maker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
The second thing I have is there is a settlement proposal with the Kroger company with regard to the opioid settlements, settlement. And so an authorized signer has to sign on behalf of Millersburg in order for us to take part in that settlement. If we don't take part in the settlement, then, I'm not saying that we're gonna get money anyhow, but if we don't agree to this, then there's no possibility that we're gonna get any money from the settlement. So I've arranged it so that I can sign the agreement. So if you pass a motion that authorizes me to, to sign off on that, then I'll go ahead and get it. We have to get it to them by August the twelfth.
Is this a separate opioid settlement than the one that we had previously signed on to?
It is. There are different defendants.
Okay.
And so this will come up. I don't know how many more defendants there are out there. But yeah, and the theory of the claim against Kroger is that they fill a lot of these opioid prescriptions. And somebody should have realized that the system was being abused and should have stopped it. And they didn't. So Kroger has agreed to enter into a settlement.
Okay.
So if you want.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Polen.
Hi.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Okay, the last thing, I wanted to update you on this speed study, the situation, which we've been waiting since March, actually. In March, I wrote a letter to Dave Poppin and I said, there are three zones that we would like to have the speed changed. And this is how I put it in the letter. I'll just restate it to you. Zone one would be from Jackson Street up to Walnut Street, just, you know, past the curve. And we wanted that entire section to be twenty-five miles an hour. As you know, now, it's already twenty-five to Clinton, so this would be twenty-five from Clinton up to Walnut Street. Now, Nate, given your study about the business, it was like a little study. The, the chief asked me to extend it. And I, I don't think we're gonna have any trouble because it's a seventy-nine percent business up to Wool, so I'm sure that if we go up to Walnut, it's, it's, might be a little bit less than seventy-nine percent, but I don't think a lot less. So with regard to zone one and zone two, Dave said, we approve that. You can go ahead and pass the legislation and the speed limits will be changed. The zone three is gonna be the problem. Zone three, I said, was from basically Jackson to No Name Street. And I said that we wanted it to be twenty-five miles per hour. And, well, part of that is already twenty-five miles an hour. That's the problem. He said, Dave says that under their present guidelines, and I don't understand it, but he said that it would have to be at least thirty miles an hour. And because it's such a short stretch of twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, that according to their guidelines, it would have to all be thirty-five. So, and that's not what we want. And, you know, I put in the letter why we don't, we think that twenty-five is, is the right miles per hour because of the danger that that hill and the curve presents, especially for truck traffic and the park being there and all that. He understands all that, but he's bound by these guidelines. But the reason that I found out that they've been dragging the heels a little bit is because their guidelines may be changed. He said by the end of July, they'll know whether their guidelines are gonna be changed or not. So zone three is to be determined at this point. He said we could go ahead with zone one and zone two. I didn't know if you wanted to do that or if you wanted to find out what's going on with zone three and then do them all at the same time.
Bob, where's zone two again?
Zone two is from, I'm sorry, I can't even say that. Zone two is from Walnut Street north to the village limits. And that would be thirty-five miles an hour, which it is already, except as you want to know, the nineteen fifty-four study says it's all twenty-five, so.
I guess I wouldn't have an issue just waiting and doing it all at once.
That's sort of what I thought, but if you wanted me to do zone one and zone two, I could certainly do that, so. Does everybody?
Is everybody okay with that?
Okay. All right, that's all. Do you have any questions over to the answer?
Thank you very much. Um, we have some upcoming meetings. We have Planning and Zoning this Wednesday. The Business and Housing was also supposed to be this Wednesday, but that got changed to July thirty-first at six PM. So that is going to be when the Business and Housing Committee will meet. And as you know, our next council meeting is August the twelfth at seven. So that's what we have coming up before the next council meeting. I'm sorry, there is a flag driving Nate not crazy over here.
I don't, same flag.
Yeah.
You had it? Okay, well, it's just making, making the rounds. See, there it is again. Okay, so the other thing that we needed to discuss was the letter to West Holmes Local Schools. The Business and Housing Committee asked Bob to come up with this letter. We have had multiple discussions about this. And I believe that we will continue to have discussions about this, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And we will discuss that further later.
Are we not going to make a motion to accept the letter and sign our name?
Not right now.
Not right now?
Not right now. Are there any committee reports? No? Okay, we have some legislation. We have the third reading of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash one zero three by Title Only and ordinance to authorize the sale of municipal tangible personal property through the internet. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to pass?
I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
She maker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Polen. Hofstadter.
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
Okay, we have the second reading, reading of Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero four by Title Only and ordinance vacating parts of streets and alleys in the village of Millersburg. Are there any questions? No? We have the first reading of Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero five by Title Only and ordinance amending the zoning map zone territory of the village of Millersburg. Any questions? Okay, whole business.
I want to bring up about our discussion about the tour buses. I was thinking Adam Street would be a better place than Clinton. Who else feels about it? By the commercial bank or office over there? Now, they got their parking lot and there's, you know, the parking right along the street, the other, the dentist office and whatever. They have parking in back. Why don't we take those off the street and use those? I think it'd be more, more convenient for the buses.
I had an idea that I gave to Nate the other day, actually on North Clay Street, out in front of, I think it's still Killbug Savings. Out in front of that building, there are actually six parking spaces out there that never get used. I come to and from work every day and nobody parks up there. And so I asked Nate what he thought about that. He said he was going to go look at that because I thought, you know, it's, it's right there.
Well, and they just took the trees out right there, too, that would free up, you know, the bus wouldn't have to worry about tree branches or anything if we go with that route.
Yeah, it seems obvious after you look at it, but that, I think that's a really good spot. You're not sending them onto any side streets then. They're staying on the state route.
And they can just get out.
I'm sorry. What I, what I suggest is, I still think if they let us know when they're coming, if we could have some kind of a temporary sign that we could slip over to say this is reserved bus parking, rather than tie it up the other three hundred and forty-eight days of the year, you know? When cars could be parking there if they want to. If we know there's buses coming, we could put those out.
I mean, these buses arrive, a lot of these people, first place they're gonna go, the restroom. So you got the courthouse right there.
They don't have a restroom anymore.
In the basement? They don't have restrooms?
Yeah, you gotta go through security.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, what porta potties out there?
They said they could still go in there.
Six.
I'm assuming they're still gonna drop them off somewhere real close to downtown and then circle around and park regardless of wherever we put this.
Nate, is, are six spots enough to fit two tour buses? Makes that be a hundred and twenty feet, right?
Hundred and twenty, yeah, should be. Most of the buses I have saw were in the forty to fifties.
Yeah. That would be an idea if we ever end up with two at the same time, you know, or two from the same company, something like that, have enough signage to cover.
You know what's also nice about that is these people that are having, driving campers and campers that are getting parked in parking lots and, I mean, we're not a common, you know, that'd be even a place if they're camping and going through. But they're not maybe gonna, it's gonna be a last minute thing because they're heading to the camp, camp place, but it'd be not, we just don't have anything.
Like, we need some direction. Do we look at a permanent site or do we look at temporary signage or do we, what do we wanna do with it?
I would say temporary signage until we see that there's a need for permanent postings. I mean, we're, we're talking fifteen, twenty, even fifteen or twenty days a year, that's a lot of the other days that people can park there that, you know, if you're gonna run into the bank, to the loan department there, or even Baker's.
Right.
Surveying or, or the education foundation, I mean, yeah. I'd hate to restrict it and then never be used all the time. So if we get some kind of temporary signage.
Yeah. And I, I have to think that they know in the majority, I don't think there's a whole lot of random buses coming in and just deciding to stop here without letting somebody know.
I think that eclipse day was unique.
Sure.
Because some, they were looking to, driving to find where they thought their best place to end up for the eclipse was gonna happen. I think that was unique.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I've seen a lot of buses out at the museum, the House Museum, so, I mean, but they have a parking lot there.
And I'm guessing those are scheduled. They know when they're coming, so I don't think it'd be a stretch to find out, to get in the list of notify us when you're coming.
If they wanna utilize the parking.
If you want, yeah, designated parking will get you one.
Couldn't we contact these tour?
Sure.
Companies and get some representative to talk with and try to work it out with them?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying at the last meeting, the ones that have contacted me, I'd tell them to go over to Clinton Street and it's worked out well for them. When we know they're coming, we can plan on it.
So, yeah, we'll get into contact with them because if they can add Millersburg to their stops, to their trips, to their plans, then, you know, they can do that. I also received a, um, note from Dave Hall. He wanted to talk to me about that, so I can let him know that we're gonna have some parking spaces for buses and then he can reach out to his people, too. So I think that'll be great. Anybody else have any old business?
I, one update, um, been going back and forth with Pathmaster, reached out to them to discuss the downtown signals. Um, finally got scheduled for the twenty-fifth. They're gonna be in town. I'll meet with them. Um, they wanna look at everything, look what we're, we're dealing with and then come up with some proposals on what we can do to try and help alleviate things, traffic flow.
That's great. That was on my list.
In the north Monroe Street, or I'm sorry, yeah, well, Monroe-Jackson Street intersection, we got a, a sign ordered with like a left turn only, arrow sign. We're gonna put it up on the signal, on the mast arm, to the south of the last, to the south of the South Line, if that makes sense. Basically out at the end of the pole to clearly designate that that's a left turn lane turning onto South Monroe. So between the sign that's back by Crawford, the lane markings will have this third marking now, but if they miss all three of them, I don't know what else we're gonna do.
Make a left turn.
They just do what they want. People just draw and do what they want.
At, uh, at the last meeting, we had talked about, uh, the, the flagpole project that was, uh, proposed for the, the South Y. And it was requested to get additional quotes for that just because the, the cost ended up being higher than what the initial, just guestment ended up being. And, and so I talked to Dale Obringer from the Lions Club and, and he had trouble getting anyone to come and, and give an additional one, but he did get an additional one that ended up being basically the same amount as what the, the first one was. So apparently it does cost thirty-two hundred dollars, whatever, to, to do that project. So we are kind of back where we were at the last meeting, where we've got three options: stick to the original fifteen hundred that we pro, had promised, uh, update the amount, or cover the whole thing. And, uh, again, I guess I'm of the opinion that we have this coalition of groups with the Lions and the Eagles and the, uh, the Legion that are willing to put money into our property and that we should have something in it. And I don't have any issue covering the full amount myself, especially noting that we have four point three million of unencumbered dollars in general fund.
Well, we don't have it. The tax people, the people that live here do. And I'm only gonna agree to the fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Because I would, if, if I was gonna give an estimate and I knew that somebody else had quoted thirty-two hundred, that's what I'm gonna quote is thirty-two hundred. So because it was already done out there, you know what somebody else quoted. But I, as far as I'm concerned, fifteen hundred is all that we agreed to.
Okay.
And, and every penny that we bring in is not, it's not our checkbook. It's everybody that pays taxes and everything. We, we speak for, it's their money. So fifteen hundred is all I'll agree to.
Anyone else have a opinion?
I mean, it's our property. I don't have a problem improving our property and that's, that's what it is. And if that's what the cost is, I think it was a little unfair that we demanded a private entity to, to get a second quote because we read the first quote. So how fair was that to the, to the first, first company? I mean, I think they, it's a reputable company. We do a lot of work with them. I don't think they're gouging anybody, so I don't have a problem paying the full amount. It's our property to approve, so.
Where did we get the fifteen hundred quote initially that was told?
Uh, that was just kind of a, a verbal quote given.
By, by Millersburg Electric?
Yes.
Well, they gave that quote. So if they gave that quote, then that was what the quote was, fifteen hundred. I mean, they've been in business a long time and they do, we do give them a lot of business.
We do.
So I think they could, because they get a lot of business, I think they could give a little here. They get a lot of business from us.
So explain again, Brett, what they're gonna do down there at the Y.
Uh, they are, uh, they are running, there is existing electrical service down there and they're going to be running it to, up above the wall, uh, to, to, for electrical to, to illuminate the flagpole that is there. And at the same time, also add a couple of receptacles that will make the Christmas lighting, uh, easier to maintain and, and plug in down there. So it, it covers the trenching, uh, they'll have to bore, uh, to get over to the top of that wall and, uh, two, two floodlights to light up the flag and, and then the two fixtures, yeah. So I think it ends up being like a hundred and forty feet of, uh, trenching and extending the, the electrical.
What, what was the cost for the flag and the pole? It was...
Uh, that is, that is being covered by the, the other groups, but that is...
I was just curious to what the cost was on that.
It, it initially was eight or nine, but then I think Dale said that he had found a different company that was, that was a little cheaper, that that was what they did. One of their specialties was flagpole installations. It was cheaper, so.
Forty-four hundred or forty-five hundred, somewhere in there.
It had been considerably cheaper than what the, the first quotes had been, but...
Isn't there, there's light on that? I guess I'm confused about the trenching because there is...
There's power.
There's power on the wall.
Yeah, but those are low voltage lights.
Oh.
So they're not, they need like...
Needs to illuminate on the flag, right?
Right, right.
Any other discussion?
I, I agree with Councilman Vaughn on the expense of that being paid for by the village.
Would anyone like to make a motion to...
I'll make that motion.
Should we wait till, uh, okay?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I, I didn't understand.
Should we wait till, uh, he said?
Yeah, I think we should.
Oh, I didn't. My attention was this way, not that one. I'll make that motion.
Okay, one second. I'm sorry, I missed it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Kellogg?
No.
Uh, Pauline?
Aye.
And Hofstetter?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm back there. Okay. I, the other old business thing I had, I wanted to update you. For, um, most of you wrote letters for the Troy Balderson grant. Um, I heard back from Javon. They received sixty-three applicants and they only sent fifteen to Washington to get, um, financed. And ours was one of the fifteen that got sent. So we will find out in September, um, how much money we receive from that. Uh, they seem to think, and this is what they said, because in that grant, we asked for five hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, he said, because we asked for so little, it's highly likely that we would get financed for that, well, we would get the grant for that. And I said, that's half a million dollars seems like a lot of money to me. And, uh, they said, well, a lot of the other ones that got sent were anywhere from three to seven million they were asking for. And so because ours was for five hundred thousand, that it was, um, likely that that's what we would get. So we'll find out in September, but I was very excited that they sent that on and that that is, um, going to be discussed in committee in Washington. So I thought that was great.
So it, so being sent to Washington means it's going to, it's guaranteed to be funded in some...
In some capacity, in some capacity. And we'll find out in September what that was. They said last year, all the ones that Troy sent were funded. Um, some were funded at what they asked for and some were for a little bit less. It just depended upon how much. So I have high hopes. So that's exciting. That'll really help the old Worcester Road waterline project. Um, new business. Anyone have anything for new business? I had a couple residents that are experiencing deer problems. Um, evidently we have a herd living at the cemetery. Um, so I talked with the Holmes County Game Warden. He had multiple ideas to alleviate that situation. Um, interestingly enough, Irish Spring soap cut up and put in your flower beds will keep deer away. Um, so that, that's one, one option. He said deer hate it. So I, I have it in my mailbox 'cause it also keeps spiders away, if anyone was wondering about that. Um, there's also a liquid called Liquid Defense Deer and Rabbit Repellent. Um, you can spray that around, human hair sprinkled around. So if you wanna call your, your beautician or the barber and get some hair, they, they hate smelling that. So get some of that. Um, and interestingly enough, fishing line. He said deer have, um, their sight, their eyes are more farther out so they can see a lot, but if they hit something and can't see it, it'll spook them and run the other way. So if you put out two lines of fishing line, um, at, on your property, the, the deer will stay out of your yard because it will freak them out. Um, so those are some easy ways to keep the deer out. He had some other options, but he suggested we try these options first and see how that works. So for any of you having deer problems, get some Irish Spring, I think that'll...
And then they're just gonna go to another neighborhood.
Right. So get Irish Spring.
Well, I mean, and other, other people are having. I was in Gambier for a week and, and they have a lot there, too. And I would assume there's a couple of things. I don't know if any of these people hunt anymore. I don't know, we've had a couple worm winters, but can they be rounded up and taken, can the, our Natch, can our, can the state come in and round them up and relocate them?
No.
Okay.
There, there are other options, but it doesn't involve that.
Yeah, no, no.
And so this was the, the least invasive options.
Okay.
According to the game warden. Um, it, it has been brought to my attention that our fire hydrants need painted. Um, the last time that was done, was it Scouts that did that?
It was an Eagle Scout.
An Eagle Scout did that. So if we have any Scouts looking for, um, a project or any other group interested in doing a public service project, uh, our fire hydrants would be a great project for you. Um...
How many do we have total, Nate?
Oh.
Did they do all of them the last time?
I believe so.
Okay.
I don't know the number off the top of my head. I would guess three, four hundred.
Okay.
It's a big project. Do you wanna, do you wanna do that?
I think I have to work that down.
Honestly, why wouldn't that be a good community service job? It would be a great community service job.
The community service job.
It would be a great community service job.
So maybe the judges can, I mean...
A few years ago, we had a guy painting curbs for us.
Okay.
For that project.
See, I think that's a, I think that's a, an idea that we should, I don't know, community service, painting those.
That would be great, so.
I'll just say that the last five, the, the guy that did the curbs was great. He showed up every night after his job and he painted curbs until they were done.
Okay.
Did a good job. Other than him, probably the last six showed up, if they showed up, they didn't make it a full day.
Well, why don't you let me be their taskmaster?
We're gonna put...
Why don't Andrea be the, I'd be willing to...
I'd love to do that.
Okay. Let me be the one to make sure that they...
Can't force them to do it, so it's on them if they don't do it.
Nope, but let me make sure they do it right.
Yep.
So we were, we were talking about, um, painting the fire hydrants. I met with one a couple of us for one day. And the question came up, would we have to get permission to do that?
Yeah.
And I said, well, that's the route that I would take. And I assumed that there's a specific color paint that you would need to, 'cause I actually thought about doing it myself. I think there's like four fire hydrants.
Yeah, we, we wanna keep them all uniform. Uniform.
So if that's something that was decided to happen, I'd come to you and...
Yeah.
Work with you on that.
Yeah.
Or anybody that would wanna do it in their neighborhood.
Yeah, if any neighborhood wants to get together and do that, I think that would be great.
Remember back in seventy-six for the American ice pavilion, they painted them all patriotic?
Yeah.
All over. And Nate wasn't...
I was one.
If he wants people to stencil stars on him, then he can be the... Yeah, yeah, the stenciling stars would be.
That's right, that's right. The last new business thing I have is, um, our Mary Millersburg Christmas celebration is going to be on November twenty-third. And we are looking for individuals or businesses to sponsor the window contest and purchase a trophy. So if anybody out there would like to do that, one of the things we're going to be doing is, uh, window contest with all the businesses in town. So if anybody's interested in that, let us know. Does anyone else have any new business? Any visitors wish to address counsel? Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment or compensation of a public employee or official and to consider the purchase of property for public pur, purposes?
Second.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstetter?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Schumaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great evening.